I'd like to call the Chickasha City Council to order. Need a roll call, please?
Hatchet?
Here.
Irving?
Here.
Gin?
Here.
Hebbelwhite?
Here.
Smith?
Present.
Alexander?
Here.
Burris?
Here.
Suthard?
Present.
Grayson?
Here. We'll have the opening prayer by Lisa and the pledge, Mike Young.
If you could please bow your heads with me in prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, we appreciate you having us all gathered here tonight. We hope that you can give us strength and wisdom tonight and keep everybody safe on their travels home. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, we do have a couple signed up for citizen comments. We'll start with Stephen Horvath. It'll be if you're wanting to speak about the road safety on West Country Club Road, please.
Yes. Hi, my name is Stephen Horvath. Thank you for allowing me a few minutes tonight in order to speak to the council. If I can direct your attention to the map on page one, send you get a copy.
Thank you.
So, four years ago, I moved to Chickasha with my daughters, and we like to ride bikes. And ever since then, I've seen more and more people traverse the road, and it's really an unsafe speed. Forty miles per hour with no, nothing on the side for pedestrians to walk or for cyclists to simply be there, and especially between the hours of 3:00 and 6:00 p.m., and the traffic is the heaviest. If you look on page two, you can see the overpass. That's the little red line that's on page one. There's no sidewalk, there's no shoulder, and the hump limits visibility for both directions. Drivers cannot see the coming over the top, and that they try to pass a cyclist or pedestrian, there's literally no way for them to go. So this creates a dangerous situation. Now, I'm asking the city to lower the speed limit across West Country Club Road 35 miles an hour as an immediate low-cost first step. On page three, I've outlined a simple low-cost safety improvement. Post 35 mile per hour signs approaching both ends of the bridge and replace the existing signs throughout the road, add a yield and pedestrian to cyclist, and stay ripe when crossing signage. These steps are inexpensive, apparently in paint and signs, and they make an immediate difference. Now, fun fact, according to the National Traffic Engineering Data, dropping the speed from 40 to 35 miles per hour reduces stopping distance by 23 feet. For an average of 5,000 pound truck, that's an extra full car length or four bicycles. Impact safety also drops by nearly 20%. The chance of severe injury or death to pedestrian goes between 85% at 40 miles per hour to 45% at 35 miles per hour. These are simple numbers that translate directly into saving lives. These improvements won't solve everything, but they are practical starting point that creates safer conditions for families and help Chickasha continue to grow in a way that's connected, walkable, and welcoming. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, next in the chute, we got George Plummer.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. A couple things I wanted to talk about, just real brief. Thanks to Councilman Smith for addressing the Veterans Day Ceremony last Tuesday at the Elks Lodge. We normally have it at the Veterans Memorial at Shannon's Springs Park, but it was kind of cool and windy that day, and we decided to move it indoors. So, I appreciate Councilman Smith for being our guest speaker, and it was a great, great address. Thank you for that. Also, just wanted to give you a report on the Taste the World Day that was held at USAO last night. The International Students Club put on an excellent exhibition of cooking from their home countries. There's about 100 international students at USAO representing about 35 or so countries, and about 20 countries had dishes from their home countries that they cooked themselves, that they got a little help. But it was a great turnout. At least 200 people showed up for that event, and thanks to Mayor Grayson for making some special accommodations to sign the proclamation to proclaim yesterday as Taste the World Day. It's been a great response. The club is fairly new, only maybe three or four months old, but they do a great service to the new international students that come to, come to the university, and they work to integrate the students not only into USAO but the community. So, just wanted to give a shout out to the International Students Club for doing what they did, and we look forward to seeing more from them in the future.
What was the favorite, your favorite thing you tried?
Don't get me to lie on that. It's all, all good from all the reports I've heard, so it's good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that's all I have on citizen communications or citizen comments. We'll move on to council communications, and I will not forget to do council communications, but we're going to start with doing the oath of office. Judge Chaffin will administer the oath of office to James Greenleaf.
Raise your right hand, please. Repeat after me. I, James Arthur Greenleaf the fifth.
Aye, James Arthur Greenleaf the fifth.
Having been duly appointed as a police officer.
Having been duly appointed as a police officer.
Of the city of Chickasha.
Of the city of Chickasha.
County of Grady.
County of Grady.
State of Oklahoma.
State of Oklahoma.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will defend.
That I will defend.
Enforce and obey.
Enforce and obey.
The statutes of the state of Oklahoma.
The statutes of the state of Oklahoma.
The constitution and laws of the United States of America.
Constitution and the laws of the United States of America.
My superior officers.
My superior officers.
And the regulations of the city of Chickasha.
And the regulations of the city of Chickasha.
And the police department.
And the police department.
That I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
My duties.
My duties.
And responsibilities.
And responsibilities.
As a citizen.
As a citizen.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
On my honor.
On my honor.
I will never betray my badge.
I will never betray my badge.
My integrity.
My integrity.
My character or the public trust.
And public trust.
I will always have courage.
I will always have courage.
To hold myself.
To hold myself.
And others accountable.
And others accountable.
For our actions.
For our actions.
This, I do solemnly swear, this 17th day of November 2025.
This, I do solemnly swear, this 17th day of November 2025.
Congratulations.
Gillian said Omar. Congratulations. 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 That's right. Congratulations.
They did play a good game, though, so. Sarah did.
Did they?
Yeah, Cowboy did.
All right, we will move on to council communication.
I'll go first. I just want to say well done to Councilman Burris on Wednesday at the junior council class. He was so prepared that it blew me away. He acted like a school teacher when he walked in there, so he did a great job. And I also wanted to say a great job to the folks here at City Hall for decorating for the holidays. Looks great.
It's beautiful, isn't it? Sorry. Mr. Mayor, at our last meeting, we went into executive session to discuss the performance and evaluation of Mr. Jim Crosby, our city manager. I believe without intention that we overlooked a step, for lack of better terminology, I'm going to call it a step. We did not offer Mr. Crosby an opportunity to come back and speak with us. I believe since we were all in favor of providing Mr. Crosby an increase of salary based on his excellent performance, we deprived him of the opportunity to talk with us about any concerns or items that he may have had to discuss with us, and he might have wanted to tell us to kick rocks, but I'm not trying to speak for the entire council or for you, Mr. Mayor, but I'm confident that this was not our intention to overlook this step. Mr. Crosby, as your door is open to the city employees, please know that our door is open to you as well. Should you have anything you would like to say to us and can here tonight, please do so, or if we need a closed-door meeting, then let's schedule. But I apologize that I did not see this as an opportunity for you to speak to us, or...
All I could say is I'm greatly honored to be your city manager, and hopefully I can keep performing in the manner that you like, and we can work together and go forward. With that, I hope everybody has a happy Thanksgiving to you and everybody here in the council, citizens.
Thank you.
Charlie?
I did have a question, Mr. Mayor, and perhaps it's for Jim, maybe Omar, I'm not for sure, but the, the nice overlay that happened in the area of Sooner Road where Sooner Road connects with East Grand Avenue, I'm assuming there's a portion that did not receive any painting of the lines. Does that represent the city's portion, and all the southbound painting would represent the county's portion? And I just don't know what happened there. The, the trucks were there the day they painted. They, they were on grand, but I guess they never laid anything down.
No, so, whoa. So, the, the city's portion is from the Country Club Road to Grand, when it was, they're going to come back and finish it out.
Thank you.
Yeah, they're going to come back. So, they thought it was from there, from that, from point A to point B.
Okay.
They was kind of like a misunderstanding, but it's going to get painted.
That's going to be wonderful. That'll be very helpful. Looks good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and fellow council members, I, I want to kind of jump on what Mr. Horvath brought up just a few moments ago about Country Club. Country Club and 29th, we had a stop sign issue. That has been remedied. I, I'm just first-class, too, I might add, because shortly after it was reported, actually by me and others, that somebody had knocked the sign over. This has been three or four months ago. We had a temporary sign up, and it was okay, but I think another gravel truck ran over it, and now it's firmly embedded in a concrete platform with four big pieces of pipe. Hopefully that will work. If it doesn't, that's a bigger truck than we want to mess with. Maybe a tank, I, I don't know, but the traffic on Country Club with the development of the new homes to the north side of the road has increased significantly in the last two years. Speeds are pretty amazing. I have to pull out from my street and get on Country Club Road, and if you do that at rush hour, which, this is Chickasha, it's not like we're in Michigan where you have real rush hours, but it's busy and you have to wait longer than you used to. And I'm, I'm concerned. You are correct, Mr. Horvath, about the, the narrowness of the road as you cross over the highway. That's not new, but there is an increased quantity of traffic. Now, I don't know whether we have to do traffic counts. I don't know if you use ODOT to do that. Those things are kind of normal, but it's been brought to my attention, especially at the intersection of Ninth and Country Club, and indeed, when I came in this evening, there were about eight cars stacked up on Ninth Street waiting to get onto Country Club, and every time somebody slows down on Country Club like me, they have to wait on me to get around the corner to get out of their way, and then it's go as fast as you can. And so, there's a handful of spots on that road that I think we need to look at, and I, I don't really know who to direct that to other than, we're making an announcement, we had a citizen's comment. Speed limits, sure you can adjust those. You probably need a stop sign at, at Ninth and Country Club. You probably need one down at about Flanders and Country Club, so, because that'll slow the traffic coming down out of that neighborhood. And, and what happens depending on where you're at on Country Club, if you're about to make a, a move onto Country Club itself and you see a car just crossing the little ridge line, you've got literally about 10 seconds to get out there in that traffic before it's on you. And because while it does say 45 or 40 miles per hour, they're doing 50. And, and then the usual thing that's also out there is, there's a lot of tractor trailers that come up and down that road, even though there's really nice signs that say no trucks. So, how we address that as a city, I, I don't really know, but I toss that out there for, for discussion, and thank you, Mr. Horvath, for the timeliness of your approach to the council. That's all I have, sir.
Clark, I would think that, and it's been a minute since we've had one, and, and we probably need to have one, but that sounds like a good work session topic to, to look at that and bring in Public Works and maybe the Police Department, talk about what we can do as far as stop signs and speed limit changes, and not only on, on that road, but, you know, if you guys have concerns in your wards.
Yeah, and, and I'm glad you said that, too. I'm, I'm remiss here. I was asked by another citizen to talk about an incident at Eighth and Chickasha, which is right at the corner where the YMCA is. Burnouts of that, of that nature, people driving their cars real fast, a young lady who works at the YMCA was yelled at by somebody who came back and threatened her. I know that was referred to the Police Department, that's their lane, but there is no stop sign from Sixth Street, is the last stop sign on Chickasha, all the way to the high school. So, cars pick up a good, good clip as they go down on Chickasha Avenue. It's been asked that they, we put a stop sign at that corner. This is as far as it's gone. I, I mentioned that I would bring it up at the city council. I'm glad this jarred my memory as well. But you're right, Mr. Mayor, we probably ought to have a working session and, and sit down and talk about what's reasonable, what's not. No, nobody likes to slow down. I mean, that's the reality. When you're, when you're late to work or just going somewhere, slowing down is the, it's not natural for us. We are Americans, by the way. We drive fast. However, there is a, a point where it becomes unsafe, and then you have to start worrying about pedestrians. You certainly can't have people in parking lots getting yelled at for, you know, if they yell at a speeding car, bully for them, but we don't need that kind of trouble, so, there you go.
And I will add to that, Clark, as someone who drives down Eighth every single morning to go to work at the Y, you can't see around the cars.
No, you cannot.
Yes. Because on my, on my trip, yeah, so I have to pull out just barely, I mean, just as far as I can to get around the cars that are parked at the Y before I can even see to go around. So, I'm, I'm in the middle of the road, and it's before I can see if anyone's coming or not. So, that would be a great place for a stop sign.
Okay.
As I said, I think, I think this is a great work session topic, because I've also heard the intersection nearby the library.
Yes.
It can get very hairy sometimes, so, that's a great, an appropriate place for that, so we can talk about it at length and bring in the appropriate departments and stuff.
Agreed.
Definitely on Country Club. I'll let you know, Clark, there will be some opposing views there.
Oh, absolutely.
And I'm, I'm always up for more enforcement of what we've already got.
Yeah.
And I find when our peace officers are in the neighborhood, really not much weird happens, and usually everybody kind of, things flow, so.
Yeah.
Anyway, thank you.
Anybody got anything else? All right, we'll move on to item four, the consent docket.
Motion to approve consent docket is presented.
Second. Discussion. Roll call.
Hatchet?
Yes.
Irving?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
Hebbelwhite?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Burris?
Yes.
Item 6A, discussion consideration of possible action to approve emergency warning siren system upgrade in the amount of $44,980 using the sole source provider, Goddard Enterprise slash American Signal Corporation.
Making motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'm hoping to determine, is, is there any parts of this matter as far as new items that are already in place?
I apologize, sir. I don't understand that, that question.
Okay. This topic that's before us, is there any equipment that's already been delivered and installed?
No, sir. So, this was a discussion we had during the budget earlier in the year. It's an idea for the sports complex. We discussed how the sport complex needed some upgrades. We felt like there's some limitations when it comes to lightning protection out there. This will allow us to make audible messaging over the siren. Currently, the sirens that we have, all they provide is the siren. It's a motor. This is speakers that we can speak into, say, hey, there's lightning within five, guys, clear the fields. We can do the national anthem and a lot of other things, pre-recorded messaging, and so this is just providing that. Also, we were able to utilize the siren that's out there to make some repairs in other areas over by 29th Street as well. So, this is just something that's pre-approved, and we're just trying to get at it. The season's over for the sports complex, so we thought now would be a good time for us to see if we can get that installed.
Had there not been a public address capability in that sports complex before?
There is. I, 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 not for our, not for our storm sirens, though, so you can't pre-record messages on our storm sirens out there at all. It'd be what you have at the, I guess what you call the, where you, where you sell like nachos and cheese, you have your, your speaker there, but not something that can address the entire area.
Okay. There's some troubling language in it. That, under terms and conditions, it'll say, this estimate is approximate and it's not guaranteed. Actual costs may change once all projected elements are finalized or negotiated. Have they not come, done a site visit before these numbers?
Yes, sir, they have. We're, they're looking at costs of, you know, inflation from the time that we do the request to the time that we get it undone. There, there really won't be very much difference in the price when we get to ordering it. We have what we have in the budget, and if we can't afford it, then we will not be purchasing the product. We just continue on with what we have currently.
Was there a failure of the 29th Street, is that why that?
No, sir.
Item would be pulled and removed.
No, sir. There's some, some of our storm sirens, they just have dated batteries, charging stations. Everything is up and running smoothly now, but we're able to, instead of having to spend more money, we're able to use the resources that we currently have to upgrade those ones and get them back to 100%.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you all.
Do I have anything else? Roll call.
Irving?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
Hebbelwhite?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Burris?
No.
Suthard?
Yes.
Hatchet?
Yes.
Grayson?
Yes. 6B, discussion consideration of possible action to accept an irrevocable standby letter of credit issued by Horizon Bank for enclave estates of Chickasha Development in compliance with Chickasha Municipal Code, Chapter 46, Article 4, Section 4645. So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Gin?
Yes.
Hebbelwhite?
Yes.
Smith?
Yeah.
Alexander?
Yes.
Burris?
Yes.
Suthard?
Yes.
Hatchet?
Yes.
Irving?
Yes.
Grayson?
Yes. Item 6C, public hearing to discuss and consider the final plan for enclave estates for Phase One. It is 6:55. I'd like to go ahead and open a public hearing.
Good afternoon. Lloyd Spoggy with Cottol, here on behalf of the applicant. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Let's go with that name again. It happened pretty fast.
Lloyd Spoggy?
Lloyd, thank you. I do have a question on page 115 of our packet. There's some number of copies and descriptions, and the last item was handwritten in there, but I can't, it's, it's some couple of initials, and it says, "Report."
Obviously, yeah, so it's hydraulic analysis is what it is.
Thank you.
I would ask, what's our timeline here?
So, we actually got the water sewer installed right now, and we're waiting for the, go ahead and start the pavement. We plan on getting the project completed, all the improvements completed by end of December.
Okay.
And then the next phase, the plan is started next year, too.
On this AHDC program, are you aware of what parameters the median gross incomes are?
No, I do not know. It's part, whatever the HUD, yeah, whatever the HUD program is, it depends on the, the surrounding, the cities and all that. It can depend on what, what the current city standards are right now, what the income is for the city of Chickasha.
And these are intended to be owner-occupied, but they could be rentals.
They could be rentals, but my clients would be in charge of it for the next fifteen years, per the standard of the HUD program.
Is there any room for our last second appeal, for any public space for the kids to play?
Next phase, we plan on having some type of open space for the kids.
Do I got anything else? Anybody? Thank you.
Thank you.
Six fifty-seven, I'd like to go ahead and close the public hearing. Move on to item six D. Discussion consideration of possible action to approve the final plat for Enclave Estates Phase One.
I make a motion that we approve the final plat for Enclave Estates Phase One.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Hebbethwaite?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Burris?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Hatchet?
Yes.
Irving?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
Grayson?
Yes. Item six E. Discussion consideration of possible action to approve master service agreement with Benham Design LLC for professional services.
Make a motion that we approve a master services agreement with Benham Design LLC for professional services.
Second.
Discussion.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor. Sir, I'm really excited to see that some items were struck from this agreement. I was curious about what process in the city would have brought that about. At what level, was it in community development or up to the head office or?
It goes, it just went before our city attorney to look at it to make sure that any item, we have a contract like that that we wanted to, if it looked like it's too much in favor of that individual or that company, and we wanted to make sure the city's protected. Our city attorney does an excellent job in going through there and strikes out them, items she doesn't agree with, and we discuss it, and then they have an opportunity to either agree with it or not.
I couldn't be happier, thank you both.
Any more discussion? Roll call.
Smith?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Burris?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Hatchet?
Yes.
Irving?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
Hebbethwaite?
Yes.
Grayson?
Yes. Item seven, motion for adjournment.
So moved, second.
Second.
For adjourned, I'd like to call the Chickasha Municipal Authority to order, any roll call, please?
Hatchet?
Here.
Irving?
Here.
Gin?
Here.
Hebbethwaite?
Here.
Smith?
Present.
Alexander?
Here.
Burris?
Here.
Sutherland?
Present.
Grayson?
Here. Item two, consent docket.
Motion to approve consent docket is presented.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Hatchet?
Yes.
Irving?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
Hebbethwaite?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Burris?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Grayson?
Yes, item four, motion for adjournment.
So moved, second.
Adjourned, I'd like to call the Chickasha Municipal Authority to order, make a roll call, please.
Hatchet?
Yes.
Irving?
Here.
Gin?
Here.
Hebbethwaite?
Here.
Smith?
Present.
Alexander?
Here.
Burris?
Here.
Sutherland?
Present.
Grayson?
Here, item two, consent docket.
Motion to approve consent docket is presented.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Hatchet?
Yes.
Irving?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
Hebbethwaite?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Burris?
Yes.
Sutherland?